Did you know that all CNET programs are available to watch online on demand on CNET1.org? Meetings of CNET member organizations, including Bellefonte Borough, State College Borough, College, Ferguson, Half Moon, Harris, and Patent Township, along with the Bellefonte area and State College area school districts, the Center County Commissioners and Center Region Council of Governments, along with the State College Borough Water Authority, the University Area Joint Authority, and the Center Region Parks and Rec Authority, are all available to watch on your computer, tablet, or phone at your convenience. Simply visit CNET1.org and click the "Watch Now" button near the top of the screen. From here, you will find lists of programs related to CNET's various member organizations. There are also playlists for candidate interviews, community events, Penn State programs, Sklaugh Library programs, and others. If you wish to watch a meeting of the Center County Board of Commissioners, click on the Center County Government playlist and choose the date of the meeting you wish to watch. Click on the title of the meeting and the video will be ready to play. Next to the video, you will see individual agenda items. Simply click on the agenda items and the video will skip to exactly that point in the meeting. To easily share the video, hover your mouse over the "Share" icon on the bottom right corner of the video. From this feature, you can copy the embed code, copy the link, or share the video through email or social media. In addition to CNET's on-demand programs, you may also watch Channels 7 and 98 live from CNET1.org. Simply select the channel you'd like to watch and the video will run the channel's live television programming. For more information, contact CNET at CNET1.org. CNET has made it easier than ever to stay informed with your local government, school district, and community. We hope you enjoy watching our programs on CNET1.org.
Are you looking to stay active and healthy in the comfort of your own home? CNET has a variety of exercise programs designed to help you stay fit and increase strength and flexibility. Strength training, moving freely, and zesty chair exercises all work on improving flexibility, ease of movement, and core body strength. Gentle yoga is a specifically designed yoga program that is easy on the joints and easy for beginners. Chair yoga has been created for those with limited mobility. CNET's exercise programs air several times each week on Channel 98 CETV. For specific airing times, please visit CNET1.org and click on "CNET Schedules," or call CNET at 814-238-5031. Nothing good on TV? You're just not watching the right channels.
You're watching CNET, Center County's government and educational access network.
Bellefonte Borough Council Work Session. Welcome, everybody. No council action will be taken. First thing we'd like to do, and you can all participate, is we're going to have a trivia question by Council Vice President Barbara Dan. Barbara?
Thank you. This is from LocalHistoria.com. The Bellefonte Borough played a major role in the Underground Railroad, which was a network of people who assisted enslaved African-Americans escape slavery. The railroad was active in the 19th century, and Bellefonte's location was strategic to helping people who were attempting journeys to the Northeast, Midwest, and to Canada. Can you name two of the buildings in Bellefonte that were part of the Underground Railroad? I knew you'd go, and go right ahead.
Nothing? Come on.
The museum is one.
The museum is one. The Hughes House where Candy Danica lives is the second one. And there's a third one that is the Ren's Nest.
The Ren's Nest? Your guess was the Bush House?
Yeah, they did say the role of the church. The AME Church.
And the AME Church. There are a whole bunch of places in town. Some of those have been confirmed, some of them have not.
Right, right. So I picked the major ones. I think it was called, Joanne, on Howard Street, is the Samuel Harris House, which was, according to Local Historia. Great.
Wait, what was the answer?
The Lynn House, which is the Bellefonte Museum, the Samuel Harris House, which is 203 East Howard Street, St. Paul's AME Church at 121 St. Paul's Street. There was also a barber shop at 211 West High, which was the Governor's Pub, that had some something to do with the Underground Railroad, but they weren't quite sure. But it was run by one of the Mills Brothers, or one of that family.
Thank you, Barbara.
You're welcome.
Okay, the next item for discussion is the CADA discussion with local officials. So who would like to start?
We invited Dave Rischel, the CEO of CADA, to maybe give us an overview of some of the things you're looking at doing going forward.
Sure, thank you very much. I have Lori Miller with me here as well, and we can answer questions now or later if you like. So just wanted to give you a little bit of an update. We were talking with Mr. Stewart on some of our contingency planning, and we're trying to use a slightly different approach to the service so that we can essentially, excuse me, design it and flex it and grow it to accommodate whatever level of spending you folks are able to bring forward. And we are trying to optimize efficiency. So what we're proposing, we're proposing is an approach where rather than use the current Cattigo app, where you can call for a ride right now, and as soon as the vehicle's available, it will go. For this service, we will do advanced reservations the day before. That will allow us to get more trips scheduled in, so we think we can run what we call higher productivity, so the vehicles are busier. We also discovered when we started using our new app that some of the people who were using Cattigo, in the borough in particular, were using it for very short trips of a couple of blocks. So our new software lets us stop that from happening, because that's really not an efficient use of the service and not fair to people who need to use it for longer trips. We are also proposing a process where, rather than the vehicles going right to everybody's front door, that we're going to use what is used in some other cities around the country for microtransit, where you have designated pickup points. We haven't yet figured out exactly where, but a couple of dozen pickup points that are close to the major arterials. So just like a passenger who is riding the bus, you might have to walk a couple of blocks to your pickup point for your ride. That also will save us some efficiency, because we don't have to go into streets and go right to people's doors. All the vehicles will be fully accessible, so we'll be able to accommodate people who have disabilities, as well as folks who don't. We are currently looking at, depending on what the demand is, one to one and a half vehicles for a couple of hours in the morning and a couple of hours in the afternoon. Again, those numbers would depend on, ultimately, on funding. Passengers would have access to the CADA network via transfer at the Neem Mall, which is the same thing they would have today. That transfer would be free, so there would be no additional charge for that. We're also looking at the possibility of folks who may be going to State College or going to the university pooling together and using our CADA Commute services. The contractor that we use for CADA Commute is Enterprise Car Rental. They manage the program for us, and they're now making some vehicles available that are smaller capacity, so that if there is a carpool group of at least four people, that small, we can set up a carpool around that, so we want to offer that to passengers as well. That's another very low cost. When you look at the cost per ride, it's about the cheapest thing that we can offer. So, and we've never done that before, so we're going to look to do that locally as well. And we are also exploring a slightly higher fare for this service, because it's not really going to be a Cattigo service. In fact, we've been experimenting with kind of branding or ways for people to differentiate this from the Cattigo service. And the name that was floated that is currently in the lead is the Bellefonte-Benner B Line. So it would have a slightly different identity, and because it's a different service, we could charge a different fare for it. So we're, I don't want to say the numbers that we're looking at, because I have to get permission from our board first, we're looking at there, but we definitely want to increase the fare a little bit, which again, would go right back into the service. The other thing I want to point out to be clear is that if passengers from one of the five member municipalities come over to Bellefonte for county business or whatever, the service that we provide, bringing those people over, would not come out of the same pot of money or the same pot of resources as the services that are here. Our new software enables us to tell and to count what that is, so it would not be counted and be paid for by the folks over there. So we're kind of doing everything we can think of to try to be more efficient and make sure every nickel that's put on the service is spent on the service here. So that's our kind of status update. Any questions?
You can't hear.
You refer to this as the... I turned my speaker on, if you let me speak. You referred to this as the Benner-Bellefonte line? Are you implying, but does that mean that Benner Township is in the loop?
Right now, they are. As far as we know, they've made a commitment to stay in, at least through this current fiscal year and into next year. The deadline to make the decision about staying in the program after this year is June 30th, but we are pretty confident that they're going to stay in through the coming fiscal year, which will be July 1st '24 to June 30th '25. So it will be Bellefonte, assuming you folks stay in, it will be Bellefonte and Benner for those times. Spring has made the decision to leave.
Because without Spring Township, we now only have one grocery store that is within a reasonable distance. If Benner Township drops out, the nearest food source is going to be either Walmart or Aldi's, and running transportation for that distance is, to me, a waste of resources.
I would agree. We are doing everything we can to help Benner stay in. Their financial commitment is not too significant, so hopefully that'll be something we can continue to get.
Okay, and is the proposed service going to be just weekdays? Would there be any weekend service at all?
It would just be Monday through Friday.
I'm speaking as loudly as I can, Doug. It's on. I said my piece.
The service would be Monday through Friday.
Thank you.
Yes. Any other questions?
Any other questions from council?
Do you know how this will change financially, what Bellefonte would be responsible for?
Well, our request to Bellefonte is to fund the program as much as possible. We understand the current rate that you folks have committed to is what we're basing this on. Our kind of operating plan is designed around what you have been, have said that you're willing to commit. If you can commit more, we can provide more service. We can either provide more vehicles, or what we'd like to do optimally is to provide service, some level of service throughout the day, instead of having it just be morning and afternoon. But essentially, the more we can, more resources we can put into this, the more service we can provide with this model. We can expand this model, you know, with a week's notice with our contractor, because the contractor that's going to be doing this is the same contractor that does all of our other service, so they have vehicles, they have resources, so it's fairly easy to adjust the service level based on resources.
Okay, so can you give me a number?
I don't know off the top of my head, it's the number you folks gave us.
Right now, we're committed for approximately $30,000 a year.
Yeah, sounds right.
That's what Dave's working on. Of course, we set our budget, and going in, you know, usually December for the calendar year. Sorry. But, so we were, he's working on a $30,000 number is what he's working on.
Okay, so what we had normally, what we had expected.
Yes.
Before. Okay, great.
Yeah, we are also, one of the reasons we're looking at fares is if we can raise the fare a little bit, that money would also go directly into the service as well. So that would, that would go to, we're providing a little bit more.
I had originally, with the last public hearing, I had recommended looking at trying to make an equal playing field between the people in the Center Region and Bellefonte-Benner, and I hoped for Spring Township as well, by doing a zoned fare. It sort of sounds you're heading in that direction slightly, but why can't we have that for everybody and not just us? Because what you did say is that you're going to do an entirely separate fare system, totally, for people in the Center Region versus the rest of us. And that, if it's not equitable across all of them, that, to me, seems a bit unfair.
I would agree. We, that's why we're being tentative about whether or not we can do a fare increase. We have to consider equity there, because this is a slightly different service. We're not talking about having the service go from $20 to like $6. We're talking about maybe it goes to $3 or something like that. And that was really based on feedback we got from customers at the hearing, that they were interested, willing to pay more for the service if we could put more service on the street. So we're trying to balance fairness and equity and trying to maximize revenue for the, for the service.
But I also heard that from the people in the Center Region, so just putting that solely on the residents of Benner and Bellefonte does not seem perfectly equitable to me. So if someone says, for example, say someone lives in Bollesburg, which is part of the Center Region, and they need to come to work on a daily basis at the courthouse, and they use public transportation, should they not also be paying the similar rates to get to the mall and then switch over and do that? What I heard, just heard you say was that they would be doing, they would just pay what they normally do, and they wouldn't make any difference. That, to me, is what is not equitable.
There would be a difference, and that's because the services provided to Bellefonte and Benner Township and previously to Spring are services that are contracted with CADA. They're different from the services that are provided as a default to our member municipalities, so there is more flexibility, frankly, based on what you folks are willing to pay and contribute of how those services are structured and how they're costed.
And a second question, go back to what Deb Clayton said, was, is the grocery store issue? So we would be able to, if Benner stays in, we have, people could go to the grocery store and come back. If that should not happen, how are we going to, safety-wise, take care of somebody who has to take a bus into State College to, or at 8:00 or 9:00 o'clock? I'm just giving an example. And have to sit there with their groceries that are thawing out until 3:00 or 4:00 in the afternoon? That, I think, is a very strong concern for healthcare. That's not going to work.
I understand that. I think our advice to passengers would be to plan their trip so that they can go shopping, get their groceries, and then come back without having to be at the grocery store during that gap.
Yes, I have a question about the transfers.
Yes.
If a passenger uses the Bellefonte-Benner service to get to the mall area to get on the connector, they would be transferring then to the CADA service, correct?
The fixed route bus, yes.
The fixed route bus. Would there then be a free transfer to that service, or would there be an additional fare going into State College and coming the other direction if somebody comes from State College, paying the CADA fixed fare?
The transfers would be free. So a passenger, let's say a passenger commuting to downtown State College from here, they would pay for this service, they would transfer for free to the fixed route bus to their final destination, and then whenever they came back, they would also transfer free onto the service.
So you'd be paying one fare to go to State College and a different fare to come back?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
We are, we're trying to keep the free transfers in place.
All right, thank you.
So what I'm hearing is that CADA is hanging on to the monies, your finances that you're looking at at the beginning of this, and it's still running the same way, and the only way we can get more is to put more money into it.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Okay, now, my other question is, and I don't think we ever got an answer for it, we get bumped for $222,000. Did we get somehow put into the COG to get that number and not contract?
I'm not sure I understand your question.
Well, we're paying $25,000 some odd dollars now. Now we're going to go up to $222,000. Where did that come from? Because we never got that answer.
It was explained in the letter that we sent to the Borough, explaining the cost of the service and the amount of service that was being provided. We've actually been subsidizing the service at a significant deficit for years, and we just reached the point, because we're running a deficit overall, that we can't continue to fund that deficit.
So if you knew there was a deficit for years, why did it all of a sudden happen this year?
It just reached a point where we needed to make a decision.
And why should we burden the taxpayers of Bellefonte, Spring Township, and Benner with this oversight by CADA?
I wouldn't say it was an oversight by CADA.
I would say that you knew it all this time. You've known it for 10 years.
Doug?
You just said it's been insufficiently funded for years. So you must, somebody must have known this before this year.
It was discussed in years previously that we were trying to get additional funds. What we'd never done is to put any kind of a, kind of a deadline or a red line, that it needs to be funded by a certain point.
We've been paying consistently each year $20,000. We increased each year by 6%. We ask, I think, starting in October, for what you projected Bellefonte Borough's share to be to CADA. We never received word of that until December, I'm going to guess, 19th? Our budget was passed that evening. How would you expect us to pay $222,000 when our budget has already been passed? Why weren't we, why wasn't this discussion taking place in 2023? I know this is history, but this is what needs to be known.
The explanation I can give you is that the kind of linchpin of all the financial conversations were discussions with Spring Township, and whether they were going to stay in the system or whether they were not going to stay in the system. And that decision was going to impact the services in Bellefonte and with Benner, and we had tried to get that decision reached before that, and we just weren't able to.
But we had no word of that. We weren't involved in that conversation, I know, unless I'm wrong. Were we?
There was conversations. We just did not have the final numbers till, like you said, Mr. Johnson, towards the end of December.
Actually, it was January. The other question I have is, I was told that to have fixed route again, it was too expensive. Is that true?
Yes, that's, that would be even more expensive.
And that reason being, why is it so much more expensive?
Our fixed route service costs per hour are about $120 to $130 an hour.
$120 to $130 per hour, okay.
And our demand response service, which is what we're running now, runs about $60 an hour, just over $60 an hour.
So why not downsize the buses? Create a fixed route so residents of Bellefonte know that the bus is going to stop at the courthouse at 9:00 a.m., arrive Walmart, College Township at 9:45, pick up at Walmart to come back to Bellefonte, 11:30, 12:45, arrive at the courthouse, whatever. With not the union employees, but the service that you're providing through Cattigo?
We can't provide fixed route service with our Cattigo contractor and vehicles. If it becomes fixed route service, then that would violate our union contract, so any fixed route service has to be provided by our employee workforce.
Have you looked at the cost of reducing the fixed route service to Bellefonte with smaller buses and less frequency?
The driving cost for fixed route service is not actually the size of the bus. It seems counterintuitive, but it's mostly the labor costs and the fringe costs. It's determining the size of the vehicle would save a little bit, would not save that much.
Thanks very much.
Sure, and in the future, we would certainly be open to looking at whatever service the Borough was interested in, it would just be a matter of what it would cost.
Any other questions for Mr. Rischel or Ms. Miller? Ms. Miller, do you have anything that you'd like to add?
No, thank you.
Okay. We have another, another speaker to speak on this topic here, but are there any other So in summary, Mr. Rischel, it sounds like something is being worked out, for those of us that didn't follow that quite as closely as some others, something is being worked out to continue the service. And for those watching and listening intently, the service will continue at the current service rate until when?
July 1st.
Until June 30th.
Okay, June 30th, so we have until then at the current service rate. Okay. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Ms. Miller. Mr. Longson? Want to come to the table, sir?
Remember, I'm from Orviston. Well, thank you for having us here tonight. I bring along with me our Director of Criminal Justice Planning, Carrie Hall, and she's going to offer a little bit of input here, once I give a little bit of initial update on our service. I am the Director of Transportation for Center County Government, and I have the privilege of operating our shared ride demand response service. And that is provided through an initiative of Center County Board of Commissioners and the government. Our service runs Monday through Friday. Trips must be reserved in advance, day prior, and we take reservations up to two months prior to your appointment. 2:00 the day prior is usually our cutoff time. Our vans operate Monday through Friday. I have vans starting out as early as 6:00 a.m., and they're out there till 5:00 p.m. some days. That can give or take a half hour either way. If there's early dialysis or something like that, I can start them a little bit earlier to get them there. But we are funded through the lottery, and also our Office of Aging funds our senior programs. A senior in Center County under our program starts at the age of 60, and they're 100% funded by the Office of Aging through Center County Government. 65 and up is lottery-funded, and then the client's portion, which is 15% of our rate, is paid by the Office of Aging. So a senior in Center County does not pay to ride our vans. We do medical assistance transportation. That's for those that have the medical assistance eligibility on their cards and their service is offered. Those trips are 100% funded through the Department of Welfare, and also PENDOT helps fund some of those trips. We have a persons with disabilities for the disabled. That's for people 18 to 60. Once they reach 60, then they can go into senior status. They do pay a small fee, usually around $4.25 per trip, to get to where they need to go and back. Those individuals, along with seniors, can go pretty much anywhere they want to in Center County during our operating hours. The medical assistance is strictly medical-related trips. General public is eligible to ride at the full fare, which varies from 1950 up, based on miles. And we do contract with a lot of agencies in Center County. Skills, Community Services Group, and various agencies that fund transportation for people. Just actually started working with one of the local school districts today for kids that live outside of the district due to being displaced and need rides to school. So we do work with those people. Again, our phone number's 814-355-6807. Our phones are answered from 7:00 to 4:30 every day, and we're more than glad to explain what we do and try to help people. But we are, again, day prior reservations, so you have to make appointments. I'll let Carrie explain. I'll let Carrie explain what they have.
So as Dave said, I'm Carrie Hall, I'm Director of Criminal Justice Planning for Center County Government. And I know it was mentioned at some of the other previous council meetings, concerns from the community about individuals that are required to make frequent appointments who are involved in our court system or seeking services through our county, you know, services, all of our human services. And that those kind of trips can be absorbed by our county transportation department, whether those individuals have a disability or a diagnosis that would qualify for one of Dave's programs he mentioned, or we have funding through certain grant opportunities for those that are involved in, for example, our specialty courts, our treatment courts, and sometimes they have to report to the courthouse five days a week. So that can get very costly. So we can absorb some of those individuals' needs as well. But Dave summarized all the services that are available. It is only Monday through Friday and during those normal business hours, but that does assist a lot of people with getting to medical appointments and groceries and dialysis and treatments and things like that. So that's all I have.
Thank you. So if people needed to, in the community throughout Center County, need transportation, they can call your number?
That's correct.
And make arrangements to be transported to?
Yes. We transport any Center County resident, no matter where you live, yes. We go pick you up, bring you to where you need to go, take you home. We do a little bit of out-of-county, like to Clinton County for doctors and Clearfield County up around Phyllisburg and the likes of that, occasional Danville trip. Let's face it, people don't have transportation. They have no way to get places. So we have been more proactive in helping with that. Obviously, we have to be cautious that we don't overload with those type of trips, but we do try to help them. We do a lot of trips to Lewistown lately, a lot of specialty doctors in Lewistown. So, you know, that's what we do. Are we in Bellefonte every day? Absolutely. And we can certainly try to help the needs of the people, but we're certainly not a fix-all. We'll do everything we can. I mean, you know, if you don't have a funding source, it can be a little costlier with our service than the microtransit, which has been a great service for people. But we'll do everything we can to help, yes.
Okay. Again, for those listening and watching and out there, that's the Center County Transportation Office, and the phone number's 814-355-6807. A question. Dave, with what you're proposing here, is this being, is this on the website for Center County, and can we also put it on the Bellefonte website as well?
Absolutely, yes, yes. Our service offering should be on our website, which is listed on the paper I left with you, and I'm going to put some on the table for people to take as well, yeah. It's a simple thing, though. If they call the office, any one of my staff that answer the phone can give them all the particulars. They can sign them up right over the phone. Takes five minutes. They get signed up and they're good to go. Yep. Yes, Joanne?
I'm thinking, and we've talked a lot about adults, how do you deal with kids that need transportation? Or you've got someone who's in the hospital and parents have left the kid at the hospital, and they need to go back and forth every day, and they have a job, and they don't know how long that's going to take. How would you handle those kinds of situations? And would that be under the Person with Disabilities section because the kids are under the age of 18?
Yeah, in some cases, it could be, yes. I would have to look at the situation individually, but we do that type of thing, yes, yes.
Because it's, because for people who are low income, who've got sick kids, it's going to be a problem paying the $19.50 minimum.
And some of those trips could qualify under medical assistance, as long as it's medically related type trips. I don't know the exact criteria for all those, but, you know, some of those are qualifying trips as well, yes, yes.
Thank you. Any other questions? Mr. Johnson?
And those arrangements have to be made 24 hours in advance of, what's the timeframe of arranging the trips?
2:00 PM the day prior.
2:00 PM the day prior to the need.
Yeah. And of course, if it's a Monday trip, you have to do it by 2:00 PM Friday, yes.
And a non-funded, just regular person calls tomorrow and wants to go from Bellefonte to Walmart, what would that round trip cost them with no funding source?
$39.
$39, okay.
Yes. That would be a round trip for a general public fare, yes.
Thank you.
Barbara?
Thank you. Is it possible for you to scale up your service with what CADA is proposing right now to help out our residents?
Well, we're working closely with the CADA folks to try to alleviate some of the people that maybe get displaced from the service changes. So we meet, I correspond with their people on a regular basis. We're looking at trip numbers and what kind of trips may increase our service. So we are looking at preparing for more people, yes.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yes, we're looking at that closely.
Dave, just one more question, based on what you said. It's $38, say Benner pulls out of CADA, so we don't have any grocers, would you be able to coordinate something so we could get a cheaper price than the $38 to get people to State College?
I can't answer that at this time. That would be a board of commissioners' decision.
Okay.
Along with our other funding agencies would have to agree to something like that. So I can't say yes or no on that.
That's a food, what do they call that? Food insecurity issue?
We certainly appreciate you guys coming out. It's certainly good news, I think, for, again, those of us that may not be following this quite as closely, to hear that you guys are working closely with CADA. We appreciate CADA coming and speaking, and it sounds to me like it's trying to be worked out. So some good information from you folks, so that was very appreciative. Any other questions? We do have some other?
All right, I'm going to stick around, by the way, Mr. President, for people that might want to talk with me or ask questions. Certainly, thank you.
Thank you, Dave.
Next, we have a couple of folks from the Dittany Valley Joint Recreation Authority that want to give us an update. Cindy and Mike, is that right? John, sorry. All right.
There we go. Hi, good evening. I'm John Tooker. I live on Curtain Street, have been a longtime Borough resident, I guess 20 years now. Since 2013, I've been a member of the Dittany Valley Joint Recreation Authority, working to renovate Kepler Pool. Buddy Johnson joined our group early on. And we're here today to provide a brief update and to ask if the Borough Council would be willing to allow us to continue to use the match that they provided a few years ago, which was originally put forth towards a $334,000 DCNR grant. But things as they are, things taking longer than they probably should be. We need to hold on to that money a little bit longer to see if we can continue to use it as a match. In the works, we have another $1.2 million grant submission that we're putting in, where we've asked for about $1 million through the local share account that was endorsed by the Center County Commissioners. So we're continuing to work. It hasn't been a smooth path, but we hope to have this resolved sometime soon. Don't let it miss.
Just, we, we would just ask that if we could get a letter of documentation providing us the ability to continue to use the match money. And additionally, on the 26th of March, 2:00 in the afternoon here, we're going to be having a stakeholders' meeting to provide a little, a more in-depth, detailed report on the renovation and the plans and the progress and where we're going with it. If you have any questions, we'll be willing to ask, answer.
This match grant, are you talking about the five-year monies that we've been giving you each year to do the poll, or is this something separate?
This is money that we already have, that you've already given, and that we have in an account. It was match money for the original grant from 2019, an original DCNR grant. That grant, we got, and it went out to bid during COVID, and it came back three times the amount of money that we have. So we had to go and get another supplemental grant for that.
So the money was originally given by the Borough, I think, over a couple of years, between 2021 through 2023, I think it amounted to $140,000.
And this was the money that we gave you in increments on a yearly basis?
Yes.
Or, that, okay, that's what I was trying to clarify. Thank you.
Other questions for these gentlemen?
I just have a comment. I want to thank you and everybody on the authority for your continued dedication and perseverance to try and bring an asset to our community and bring in a community pullback. So thank you for all your hard work. I know, as I sat on the authority for a little bit, it's overwhelming at times, but it's greatly appreciated. So thank you and best of luck.
Thank you for your support.
Anyone else? Gentlemen, thanks for your time and wish you good luck. Thank you.
I have a question. I thought part of this meeting this season was going to have federal, state, and local. We did have Center County, I appreciate that. What happened with the other people?
Other, there's folks in the audience, from those staff, elected officials, listening. We could see if there's anything to offer.
I would like that, if possible.
Anybody have anything else to offer relative to the CADA presentation tonight? Come on up, sir.
Oh, sorry. I think one of the reasons that they were running a deficit quote for years is right where I live, on Main Street, and I've lived there for 11 years, they had buses going around empty. 7:30, 8:30, all the way to 9:35 at night, they were empty. One of the drivers said to me one time, "This is ridiculous. I drive around here for hours with nobody on the bus. You're the last person I'll see." She let me off at 6, I think it was 6:30. And basically, she goes, "But if they want to pay me 20-plus dollars an hour to do this, that's what they do." Everybody knew it. The drivers knew it, the passengers knew it. You live in Bellefonte, you knew it. You saw the buses going around empty. That's why they ran a deficit. I don't know what it costs to run a 40-foot bus with nobody on it. The buses that took the people to work in the morning, I think there were two of them, and they brought them home in the evening, mostly from the university and the restaurants downtown, were packed. They were standing room only, people used them. There was a few midday buses. Others would take you out to the mall where you'd connect with another bus. They now call it the County Connector, it's very useful. But they had buses running around empty for years. That's why they're in deficit. Now, I can't believe that they can't work out some sort of a reasonable plan with these cutaway buses that would just take people out to Walmart where they could get the County Connector. That's why they have the County Connector. It'll take you anywhere CADA goes. Now, with regard to CADA GO, CADA Ride does a very good job. Their drivers seem to be well-trained and know how to handle disabled people and the rest of it. CADA GO, when it started, they would pick you up in 10 or 15 minutes. Recently, I had eye surgery, and then I had to go pick up a prescription. I couldn't drive. From my house on Main Street in Pleasant Gap, it took three and a half hours to go to Walmart to pick up a prescription. I didn't get home till 4:30. It doesn't work anymore. I have a friend, she works at the Red Horse Tavern, she told me it took, she came to work two hours late from Bellefonte. It's not an answer. They could say it's an answer, and they could say that it's cheaper. I don't see how it possibly can be cheaper to have all these little vans driving all over the place. It puts a lot more vehicles on the road, too. The reason, though, that it was in deficit is it was poorly run and poorly run for years. Everyone knew it. Everybody who lived on Main Street in Pleasant Gap saw those buses. You saw them going around empty. And I'd like to know why they kept it like that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, anything else for the work session? Deborah?
Do we have any information on state or federal funding opportunities to address this?
Nothing specific. There's a couple, I know Senator Dush has a work session coming up on grants and possible opportunities, so we'll be attending that. But we put the word out right from the beginning, looking for opportunities for funding and still looking, you know, still, we're still very much pursuing any leads.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
And related to that, what about the congressional level? I know that GT's representative is here, I did talk to him last Thursday morning, and he did say he couldn't be, but that he might be able to provide something. So I don't know if that, he came up with anything after I talked to him Thursday morning?
Cindy's been, you know, lockstep with us in this. Cindy Coons is a staff person, and everything's going, you know, we're looking for funding, so we'll certainly keep pursuing those leads.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart.
I work for Senator Dush. Can I just say where the?
Come on up. Yep, come on up, sure.
I'm shy, I don't like speaking. In the microphone. I just wanted to tag team on what Ralph said about the municipal grant seminar. It's Thursday, March 28th at 3:00 PM, and it is at C3 Sports. So, you know, that's the opportunity for you guys to ask our grant person what would be available. Other municipalities will be there. It was open to anybody in Center County. If you can't make Center Counties, we're doing one in Clinton County that same day, but in the morning at the Dunnstown Fire Hall. So either place, come out, please, listen to what they have to say, see what grant opportunities are available, hopefully that they're able to pair you guys with something that would be helpful.
Thank you for that.
Thank you, Brandy.
Appreciate that.
Brandy, just a real quick question. I don't know where 3C Sports is. Can you give an address for those of us?
Yeah, I sure can. Let me get back into here. It's right on the Benner Pike. It's the church that's doing, running, right by Tractor Supply. Yep, let me get into this in a minute. It is 200 Ellis Place.
Behind Tractor Supply.
And State College.
For those who don't know what that is.
Right. Like, I think, you'll, once you see where it is, you'll recognize the place it is.
It's right next to the CADA GO dispatch office.
And there you have it. Bam! Thank you.
All right, thanks. Yes, ma'am, come on up. There's a gentleman's there, okay?
I just wanted to take a minute and introduce myself. My name's Cindy Coons. I'm a field representative for Congressman Glenn Thompson. Joanne briefed the congressman on the issue last week. I further briefed him this morning. I'm here representing him today. I've taken lots of notes. We are in search of funding. There is a good bit of federal money that goes into public transportation generally, so I don't know that we'll come up with any specific grants, but we continue to look for you and work on your behalf.
Thank you. Sir, did you want to say something quickly? Yeah, the one that raised his hand. Yep. That's you.
This takes a little hard for me. I'll get there. Ralph, I'll get there. It takes me a while. All right? I'm the guy with the little tag on my car. I'm the [bleep]. This is me, sorry, guys. Some of you know me. I'm the water here at Benner. Okay, people work for me. This is my company. I don't, I'm not a guy that sells you anything or wants anything from you. I just want my people taken care of. They're the ones that go to work. I'm going to leave this for you, Chair.
Okay, sir, thank you.
I can't, I can't make that trip, so I'm probably going to ask somebody.
Give it to Mr., give it to Dave there, he'll make sure I get it. Yep, thank you.
I'll deliver it. Absolutely.
But I am Benner. Okay, this is Benner. At least Benner to me.
All right, if there's nothing else, that will conclude the Bellefonte Borough work session. We'll start the business meeting at 7:30 sharp. Thank you.
You're watching CNET, Center County's Government and Educational Access Network.
I'd like to call over to Bellefonte Borough Council Business Meeting. Would you like to start off with a pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the Father, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Bernier.
Present.
Mr. Brackville.
Present.
Ms. Cleaton.
Here.
Ms. Dan.
Here.
Mr. Johnson.
Present.
Ms. McKean.
Here.
Ms. Purnell.
Here.
Ms. Sedgwick.
Here.
Ms. Tosti Vacy.
I'm here.
Mayor Larson, or Mr. Larson.
Here.
Mayor Johnson.
Here.
Additions to the council meeting agenda. Anybody have any additions to our agenda they'd like us to consider tonight?
Someone may want to add the Anetney Valley Joint Rec Authority, their request to the holding the 140,000 for the next grant application.
Do we need a motion then for that?
I'll make that motion, Brackville.
Johnson, thank you, gentlemen. So, it's added. We're not going to make a motion on that.
We need a vote on that.
Mr. Bernier.
Yes.
Mr. Brackville.
Yes.
Ms. Cleaton.
Yes.
Ms. Dan.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Ms. McKean.
Yes.
Ms. Purnell.
Yes.
Ms. Sedgwick.
Yes.
Ms. Tosti Vacy.
Yes.
Thank you. Next is...
I might, I might have one additional. So, let me ask a question. Under the communications, we have stuff about the Clearwater Conservancy and a watershed cleanup. It says no council action is needed. I'm not sure if we possibly may need some action because there's asking for a proclamation and a appointment of somebody or those kinds of things, or if we, or we could just wait until the next meeting. So, I don't know if we need to do add it or not. That's what I'm asking.
We can wait till the next meeting. In the past, we just, we followed up on Monday with, as far as labor concerns, other than volunteers. But if the mayor wants to do a proclamation, we can prepare that and put it in on the agenda for the next meeting.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. Next is public comment. This is the time if you'd like to come up to the podium and speak on any topic, we'll give you three minutes if there's anybody in the audience that would like to make a comment or anybody on council. If not, then we'll move on to communications. First one is the Clearwater Conservancy.
Yes, as was mentioned a moment ago, they're having the annual watershed cleanup day, which is scheduled for, I believe it's 8:00 AM to noon on April 20th. Each municipality kind of helps coordinate the activities within the municipality in the Long Spring Creek. So, we're looking for volunteers. I'd contact Clearwater Conservancy for more information. And again, we have no council action for this evening.
Okay, I have several questions. I think most of this can be handled at the next one, but just kind of put in, bug in everybody's ear. The letter said that they want us to determine where the activities. Do we want to do that in a work session next time, or do we, do we want to have the administration take care of that? The second one is can we post their flyer on our website? The third one, do, or will we have the administration have to appoint the contact person? And that's it.
I can just real quickly go down that list. We can have our staff look at if there's any problem areas along Spring Creek and get a list for you. We, we don't have any official coordinators unless there's volunteers out there. We've had, we don't, we don't pay people to come out overtime for this. So, we are looking for volunteers to help with this event if they're, if they want to. And then lastly...
Flyer on the website.
The flyer on the website. That's easy enough. We can do that tomorrow. Thank you. I believe that's everything.
Oh, it's the 28th Annual, so they probably have this down to a science, don't they?
Yes.
Okay. Moving on to the next communication is the Center County Government. Interested in using our North Penn Street between High Street and Pike Lane. There was photographs of it in your packet tonight to join the adjacent parking lots. Previous council had conveyed to the county that it would be open to abandoning this section of the North Penn Street. The county is checking with the current council to see if this offer is still available. I'll need a motion and a second to convey to Center County Government that the borough is open to abandoning the above-mentioned section of North Penn Street for the county to connect off-street parking lots adjacent to this street.
I'll make a motion.
Joanne and Mr. Johnson?
I was going to make a motion to consider abandoning this, this section, which is a full block of North Penn Street between Pike and High to Center County Government for purposes of creating combined county employee parking lot. And if the county decides not to do this, we will retain ownership of this section of North Penn Street.
I'm not, I'm not even sure what that means, Joanne.
That, what that means is we're doing what they requested, but if they decide not to do it, we still retain, retain ownership like we had the last time we went through with this. It's just a consistency issue.
We're only making the motion and asking for a second to give them this for the purpose of connecting their off-street parking lots.
That's what I'm...
Obviously, if they don't do that, then the deal's off the table. Mr. Lamison, you're here for this tonight. Do you have any additional? Oh, okay.
Basically...
I think, Mr. President, I think what she's asking is if, if the county does the renovation and, you know, and I hear what you're saying, I'm fine with the way the, the motion was made. It's been seconded. Are you making another motion?
No, it's all one motion. Just like I said.
So, what motion? Do we have a second to her changing the current motion?
I had a second to the original motion that you stated.
But we didn't have a first. She was making, let, let's do this again. Do I have a, I'm asking Borough Council, the way it's written here tonight for a motion and a second for the way that it's written right here in front of us and the way it was presented in our packet tonight.
And I will make that motion.
There's one. Do I have a second?
And I will second it.
Thank you, Barbara.
For discussion, all I was trying to do was saying that that motion is perfectly fine.
Okay, well...
But let me finish.
Let's move on.
I would want, I just wanted to make sure that if they decide not to do it, or it goes like it did five years ago, that we still have, we still have the, the street. So, basically it's, it's sort of a contingency. We know what happens if they don't go through with it.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion?
I, I, one concern is do we now, I don't know what was built there over the years and whether there's any kind of piping underneath that that they'd have to check for, but should we have possibility of having a right-of-way somewhere if something like that shows up?
I know that all we were doing tonight was doing this so they could give it on to their engineers to do the project. So, we would have to put our trust in the engineers that are going to do it. I believe that's what was written in our packet with the photograph, so I doubt they're going to do it haphazardly, but...
Yeah, I'm not saying that. I'm just...
Well, I don't know. I mean, the only information we have is what they gave us.
We should have those rights, stupid, because it'd be stuff on paper.
I believe, Randy, in the past, we checked that out. I don't think there's any utilities in that portion of North Penn Street. So, I, I'm sure we checked it out. It's just been a few years, so I can't say 100%, but it, you know, if something wouldn't be rerouted, you know, we, we wouldn't do that ourselves. But I'm pretty sure we cleared that when this came up a number of years ago.
Debra?
Yes, in the, the letter, there was discussion about leveling the two parking lots to make them more accessible. There's nothing in there about whether or not that section of North Penn Street would still be open to through traffic, or if it would be closed off as a parking lot.
No, no, it would be closed off. They, they want to use that piece of land and connect the two parking lots. It would not be a, a road anymore. It'd be added into their parking lots.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, they're, they're creating more space for county employees and jury selection. It's going to become one parking lot. It's going to be approved by the Planning Commission through Bellefonte Borough. That's the process that goes through county planning. So, we're all going to see it again, and you have to have some trust or faith in what the county's doing. It's, they're creating a larger parking lot for, for the county. It'll relieve some stress on the downtown parking. Makes great sense to me.
Other discussion?
Okay, Mr. Bernier.
Yes.
Mr. Brackville.
Yes.
Ms. Cleaton.
Yes.
Ms. Dan.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Ms. McKean.
Yes.
Ms. Purnell.
Yes.
Ms. Sedgwick.
Yes.
Ms. Tosti Vacy.
Yes.
Thank you. Next section is our consent agenda. All items listed on the consent agenda are considered routine and will be acted upon one single motion. I have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
Mr. Bernier.
Yes.
Mr. Brackville.
Yes.
Ms. Cleaton.
Yes.
Ms. Dan.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Ms. McKean.
Yes.
Ms. Purnell.
Yes.
Ms. Sedgwick.
Yes.
Ms. Tosti Vacy.
Yes.
Thank you, council. Next is reports. First is our mayor with a proclamation.
Yes, sir. Tonight, I have a Pennsylvania 4-H Week proclamation, whereas 4-H is America's largest youth development organization, supporting nearly 6 million youth across this country. And whereas 4-H has helped youth in this county to become confident, independent, resilient, and compassionate leaders as they learn by doing. And whereas 4-H in Pennsylvania is delivered by the Penn State Cooperative Extension in rural areas, small towns, and cities in all 67 counties of the Commonwealth, to more than 77,000 youth ages 5 through 18. And whereas 4-H youth in Pennsylvania are served by a network of staff members and more than 6,000 adult volunteers who engage and mentor youth in learning activities and hands-on projects in topics such as animal science, civic engagement, STEM, and health and wellness. Whereas Pennsylvania 4-H Week showcases the incredible ways 4-H inspires kids to achieve and highlight the remarkable 4-H youth in Center County who work each day to make a positive impact on those around them. And whereas 4-H's network provides youth with opportunities for leadership development, career exploration, problem-solving, friendships, community involvement, passion, and purpose. And now, therefore be it resolved, I, Buddy Johnson, Mayor of Borough of Bellefonte, Pennsylvania, do hereby proclaim March 17th through 23rd, 2024, as Pennsylvania 4-H Week in the Bellefonte Borough, and encourage all citizens to acknowledge and celebrate 4-H for its valued service and continued efforts to empower youth with a foundation of success for a lifetime. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Other reports that were submitted in your packet tonight include Chief Weaver's, the parking report, and Office of Community Affairs. Anybody have any questions relative any of those reports? Nuisance codes, and of course, Mr. Stewart's Borough Manager Report. Yes, Joanne?
I have a, more of a clarification question for you, Ralph. In your report, you state that the administrative officers are going into the second floor of this building. Do you mean the top floor or this floor?
It's, we, we went over the labels for quite some time, but it would be the second floor. So, there's the ground floor where you come off a lam. There's the first floor where, where you come in off a spring, which is the floor we're on. And then there's the second floor.
That's what I thought, but I just wanted to make it clear to the public which was the second floor.
Ground, first, and second.
It took us a while. Took us a while to figure that out, too.
Ground, second. First.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Comment, anyway. I think I saw this somewhere when I was going through the agenda this week concerning the Spring Creek Watershed Commission, state of the watershed. The meeting is on March 28th, 2024. There's, the correction is that it starts at 9:30 and ends at noon. It's listed as 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM. It needed to be changed. That's it.
It should be 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM?
9:30 AM to 12:00 noon.
All right, thank you, Mr. Brackville. Liaison reports. Anybody have anything that's part of any of those organizations or any questions about those reports that were submitted in our packet? If none, we'll move on to current and old business. First item is a resolution, number 03182024-01, business of our site grant for 200,000, 2 million, 2 million. A motion and a second to approve the resolution.
I'll make that motion.
I have a couple of questions.
Discussion, yep.
First is, do you have any idea of the expected groundbreaking date?
Based on an email from, so just to clarify, the waterfront developers have asked us to submit for this grant, and it has to be a municipal applicant. So...
That I understand.
We're just, I'm just so that people know what we're talking about. It's a grant application to the state on behalf of the developers that are, want to develop the waterfront property here in Bellefonte. So, and by email, they said they were, they're, they're very optimistic about possibly breaking ground yet this year. So, they, they must expect a fast turnaround on this application.
Okay. The second question is, will the garage be built at, because that's what this grant is for, is for the garage. It's not for the hotel and it's not for the housing. Will the garage be built at the same time as the hotel as we were originally told, or will there be, or will it only be the garage done at this time?
They told us, they have not, they have not said anything different. The garage must be built at the same time the hotel was, or within a couple of months of each other. They want the, they want them both done at the same time. The hotel relies on that parking that is in the garage, so they, they have to be done at the same time.
Perfect. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Okay, Mr. Bernier.
Yes.
Mr. Brackville.
Yes.
Ms. Cleaton.
Yes.
Ms. Dan.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Ms. McKean.
Yes.
Ms. Purnell.
Yes.
Ms. Sedgwick.
Yes.
Ms. Tosti Vacy.
Yes.
Thank you. Next item is a reminder that the Center County Boroughs Association meeting is scheduled for 6:00 PM Wednesday, March 27th, at 301 North Spring Street. Again, that's Wednesday, March 27th at 6:00 PM. That's the Center County Boroughs Association meeting. Next item, Armory Committee Recommendation. Action required. I need a motion and a second to direct that due to budget constraints, no additional work to be done at the armory beyond what is under contract unless approved by council. Need a motion and a second.
I may.
Dan?
So moved.
I'll second.
Thank you. Discussion?
Yes.
Joanne, you?
Just a curiosity question. What, what are the items that are likely to be delayed because, that we aren't, aren't under contract?
There's no real delay other than finishing up the existing contracts, but there were some optional things that we were looking at. We're not going to do anything optional. We're just simply going to finish up the existing contracts and then, you know, move over, move the offices.
Yeah, no, what I'm asking is what are those optional things that we're talking about?
We were looking at, for example, there's three offices that are kind of were add-ons. We were thinking of, and it was hard to explain, but taking out those three offices. They're, they're kind of in an awkward location, but for now, we're just going to leave them there.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Next, we need to take a moment here and go back into executive session for a personal...
We have to vote first.
Oh, we got to vote? Oh, we got to vote?
Yeah. The Armory Committee Recommendation.
Let's vote.
Okay, Mr. Bernier?
Yes.
Mr. Brackville?
Yes.
Ms. Clayton?
Yes.
Ms. Dan?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKean?
Yes.
Ms. Purnell?
Yes.
Ms. Sedgwick?
Yes.
Ms. Tosti Vacy?
Yes.
Now, we need to move to executive session to discuss a personal matter. Need a motion and a second to go into executive-
I'll make a motion to go with executive session.
I'll second it, Dan.
Thank you.
You're watching CNET, Center County's Government and Educational Access Network.
So, business meetings back in session, we're, completed our executive session, which on our agenda, it was stated that we had a, a motion, we were going to do a motion and a second and a vote to terminate an officer from the Belfont Police Department. However, that officer has chosen to resign, we had a resignation letter submitted earlier today, so no council action was necessary, no vote is necessary. So we're moving on to new business, and that first item is a Jean-Claire Escavating Certificate for Payment Number Three, the amount of $37,958.68 for the Parkview Heights Storm Order Management Project. Motion and a second to remit payment, please.
Second, Tosti Vacy.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Bernier?
Yes.
Mr. Brackville?
Yes.
Ms. Clayton?
Yes.
Ms. Dan?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKean?
Yes.
Ms. Purnell?
Yes.
Ms. Sedgwick?
Yes.
Ms. Tosti Vacy?
Yes.
Thank you. Next item under new business is the Community Development Block Grant, CDVG Program Application Preparation Schedule for Fiscal Year 2024. So the information's there for you to review, there's no council action necessary. The next is a memo from our Assistant Borough Manager on various projects and updates within the borough. Do you have anything specific that you'd like to bring up, or?
We're still, we have the, we did get the tree grant, the Tree Pennsylvania, where the trees will be arriving in April. I believe it's Wednesday, the 10th, and that following Saturday, we'll be, we'll be planting them. Still looking for a couple volunteers, so anyone that was willing to help would be great. Let me see, finalized the project, the second phase of the streetscape project for South Spring Street and West Bishop, it's going along well, it's going to be let for bids shortly, however, the earliest construction can begin will be around August the 17th with a completion date around November the 10th. Still looking for some prices on the restroom and batting cage at Governor's Park and still working on that. Wanted to mention about Belfont Borough's holding a composting, kind of a webinar seminar on Saturday, April the 6th, it's the first date that the Musser Lane is open from 10 to 12. Anyone that comes to Musser Lane and views how we're composting, will get a free bag of compost to take with them.
Thank you again, so that was April 10th, you're still looking for volunteers for the trees?
Yes.
Okay.
Couple questions? Can we, these are the easy things, can we add the, I looked on the calendar this afternoon and looked on the front page of the website, can we add the composting open house and the maple trees in the right-of-way on the front page of our website?
Yes.
And the other thing that you mentioned in your report was the EV meters. Do you have an idea as when the new EV parking fees will start?
They already started, we're just, I mean, right now, we're just waiting on signage to complete everything.
So, okay, so if someone goes there and they don't, the signage isn't there, and so they don't realize what's going on, are they going to be exonerated until those signs get up?
We'll have to wait and see, we probably don't want to make that decision here right now.
Oh, it's just a question, I don't, I'm not saying making a decision.
Yeah, there would be, there wouldn't be any real issues at this point until the signage is up, which it will be any day, so.
Okay, that's all I want to know, thanks.
Anything else from council?
There is the Nittany Valley Pool Funding Letter that we added, we could put it under new business and- Thank you.
I'll second it.
So what was that exactly?
A request that we maintain or stay with the funding for the swimming pool, I think it was 140,000.
Approximately 140,000. We've already raised the funds, it was for a grant that they no longer have, but they're reapplying again, so they just want to make sure the borough's okay withholding the funding and till they see, they didn't mention tonight, they just want to see whether or not if they get the grant, if they don't get this grant, that, they told me that that, the money would just come back to the borough then.
Thank you. Okay, that's all the business, all the questions, all the comments?
We have to have a vote.
On the letter, right, for the-
140K, yeah, Mr. Bernier?
Yes.
Mr. Brackville?
Yes.
Ms. Clayton?
Yes.
Ms. Dan?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKean?
Yes.
Ms. Purnell?
Yes.
Ms. Sedgwick? Ms. Tosti Vacy?
Yes.
Thank you.
And before we adjourn, I have one item that was listed below the adjournment, if I can ask a question?
Go ahead, Joanne.
Okay, the 2024 list of goals, actions, has some duplicate statements of multiple projects that need to be consolidated, and some of the items need to have notes added to them. I've made a list, I'm going to give it to Ralph and Don, so you can look at it, so we don't have to go through it, and I do have one question, there's something on there, this is Logan Branch Raceway Cut-Off Permit and Project in 2024, what is this?
There's a, over near the Willow Bank Bridge, with, within the Logan Branch Waterway, there's a pipeline that's, I think has some issue that we want to cap off, it creates some flooding around the match factory, so we're, we're looking at the permitting in order to do that.
Okay. With that, I'll ask for a motion and a second to adjourn.
Motion, motion and a second.